Alright, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Parks Board Meeting on August nine, or October ninth. May we have roll call?
I supposed to call him, uh, Trustee Milam? Trustee Hatcher?
Here.
Uh, Trustee Zeiler?
Here.
Trustee Nicolason? Not here. And Chairman North?
Here. Would you please stand with, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America's citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had an opportunity to look through the minutes from our last meeting? If so, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second. I'll second it.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? So moved. Director's report.
Okay, um, as everybody's aware, we have some drainage issues with the parking lot at the Casper Mountain Trail Center. I contacted the design engineer. They came up with a drop inlet plan. And I have that out to a couple of contractors waiting on estimates and timelines from them. So that I can provide that estimated cost and timeline. One of them said they may be able to get to it by the end of October. Depending on weather, of course, and depending on funding for that. So that's where that's at. The design is a, I can't, I have it here, I can read it to you. It's an eighteen inch, eighteen by twelve inch wide grate with cement collar. It has a twelve inch RCP pipe that runs twenty feet over to our existing twenty-four inch and ties into there. From the design drawing here, it looks like it's probably three feet of excavation, so it's not very deep. So hopefully it's a fairly inexpensive solution to our problem. This will allow the parking lot to drain in front of the handicap and we can grade to the site and and remove some of the water there since it's so flat, running east there.
Michael, how far is the apron out around that? That, what did they have for the apron going into that grate?
Okay, so it's a, it's a two foot by three foot cast iron grate. And it has eighteen inch wide apron around that, an eighteen inch wide concrete collar around that. So we'll be able to maintain, you know, clean it out and grade to that.
We may want to extend that, just the concrete apron because that's not nearly enough coming off of a gravel parking lot if we don't. Yep, yep. I would recommend that we go at least ten feet all the way around that if we can. I mean, that, that's my recommend, that's my recommendation, so. And that's not, that won't add that much as far as the overall cost. Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten is, I don't know, ten?
Well, it depends, I mean, where it is and how much water is ever going to.
It will, and, and you need to make sure that it's easy access and clean it out because it will still flow.
Yeah.
Yep. So.
Okay, well, I'll work that up in the estimate as well and get the quotes. Uh, what's that? It is, um, it's twelve inches thick. And it, it also includes, uh, number four rebar in it, so it's reinforced.
Okay, good.
The Saturday is the Casper Mountain Trail Center Open House. I put a couple of examples of gift certificates that County Parks would like to have drawings for during the event. What I'm proposing is, uh, doing ten of the two nights camping ones, drawing ten of those. Ten of the Nordic Trail Day passes, which you don't have in front of you. Ten minor trail season passes and ten adult season passes, which I have in front of you. As well as doing four Nordic Trail Family Pack season passes. That would be two adults and up to three children. Total monetary value for all of these is two thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. So I guess what I'm hoping the board either approves or indicates if we should have more or less of these gift certificates to, to have drawings on, on Saturday.
So were there, how many, five, all different packages?
Uh, yes, five different packages. So we'll have five individual buckets to, to put your tickets in. For what you want to draw for. And the camping is for Casper Mountain only, since this is a Casper Mountain event. So I'm looking for recommendations, changes, approval, whatever. Whatever this board decides we should do.
I think that, well, we can do in-kind stuff without any problems, so it's not a, it's not something that we're having to pay for. It's just an in-kind process that we're, that we're doing this according to, you've checked with Tracy to.
Yes.
I, I just want to make sure we don't get in, get in trouble with our, with our county clerk, so. Yeah, if we don't have any, if she didn't have any problem with that, I think that that's adequate. I think that's a, that's a good start. One thing, I do understand that, you know, that this is an event on Casper Mountain. But if we got people coming up there, I wouldn't have any problem with doing the camping at either, at any of our locations. That, I mean, that's just my personal feeling. Nope, Jim doesn't want to do that, so he wants to keep it up there. So. So, okay.
Okay, so I'll.
Anybody else feelings on that? Okay, then we'll keep it on the mountain.
I agree with you, keep it on the mountain.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll stay with this amount of, of ten of each of these, okay?
Okay.
Hey, Michael, I don't notice, I know these are just a sample, but on this adult Nordic Trail Pass that we have on here, so it's twenty-five, twenty-six season, but on your dates, you have eleven-one, twenty-twenty-five, and twelve-thirty-one, twenty-five. Is that supposed to be a different date or is that?
No, um, that's to redeem it because our, our season, we quit grooming April first.
Okay.
And so, um, we could change that date to, um, you know, whatever date. We could do it up to April first. We just felt like most people, the bulk of the passes are purchased by the end of the year.
Okay. Nope, that's a good expectation. I just say that just gives a month and a half, but I get that also, I get the passes people normally have by then.
But since we're giving these away, it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference when they renew. It just has to be, I mean, as long as it's in the twenty-five, twenty-six winter season, I wouldn't have any problem.
So you'd like to me, me to extend the redemption date through March thirty-first of twenty-six?
I don't have any problem with that because if they don't redo it before that, they're the only ones that are losing out. It's not going to affect, you know, our, our budget. It's not going to affect any of our revenue that's coming in or anything else. So it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference when they renew it, if they win it, as long as it's this season.
Okay.
It, there's no, it's not going to make a lot of difference there.
Okay. We'll get that changed before Saturday. I do have, uh,
That also coincides with the way you have the campgrounds set up too, because it basically goes till the end of the season.
So the campgrounds don't start until March, and the reason for that is we have a ninety-day reservation.
Right. But I mean, it, the ending date goes through the end of September. That's all I'm saying, is that it goes through.
Yeah, this, yeah, this goes through because we typically close camping on the mountain on October first.
That's rea, that's, so it's just consistent. Same thing with the, the trail pass.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, uh, for the grand opening, um, Mr. Tyler assisted us and put together a, an agenda. Casper Nordic Club will be doing trail cleanup from nine to noon. The open house events will be from eleven to four. Food that was graciously, graciously donated, that'll arrive around twelve, or eleven-thirty. Food will be provided between twelve and two, or until it runs out. CWTA will be doing a Take-A-Kid Mountain biking over in the stadium area starting around noon. And that'll go until the end of the event. Trail Center dedication and comments, which brings the commissioners and this Parks Board up there, that's at one o'clock. So I can string a ribbon up if you guys want to cut it, or we can just have, I believe Chairman North's going to be there.
I'll be there.
Um, we can have him speak on, on the lodge and do the, do the dedication part. At two o'clock, there'll be a, a ribbon cutting for the new single-track trails that CWTA has constructed. That'll be next to the Trail Center. That's, they've been doing a lot of work off that Summer Trail Master Plan that was adopted. Two-thirty, there'll be group hikes and rides on the new trails. It'll be led by the Trail Runners, Fat Fish, Camber, and Casper Nordic. So a lot of the user groups that use that area will do guided hikes and bikes. And then four o'clock's a lodge cleanup. Are there any questions on the schedule for the event?
Did you send us that schedule?
I did not.
Would you send that to us?
Yes. That's all I have on the Casper Mountain Trail Center. Are there any questions? Um, over at Archer Range, uh, I had a young lady, she's come and visited me in my office twice now. She is, uh, working on her Girl Scout Gold Award. And, um, looking for a project to do, and then Archer Range has interested her, so uh, she's putting together a proposal now, possibly installing the new targets on the target line, improving the bow hangers and, and overall cleanup as part of her project, beautification of the area. So I, I'm hoping that she'll have her proposal ready for the November meeting. And then I'm continuing to contact the one vendor that I can find for the targets that we like, uh, so we can get those purchased this winter, uh, because I'm sure there's a lead time on them, so they can be installed in spring.
Michael, I know Visit Casper talked about having leftover funding that they could help us out on some of that. Has Annette said anything else, more to you about that?
I have not heard any more, except what you mentioned.
Okay, alright. Just for the rest of the board, um, they have a pretty, pretty good chunk of change left over from another project that they said they probably, they'll help us out on that. And so we may be able to get a whole lot more purchase this year than what we had originally anticipated. Thanks.
Um, that's all I really have for Casper Mountain right now. We're, we're putting, uh, we're putting a new set of tracks on one of the gurmers. These tracks have been in storage for a while, but the current tracks are wearing out, so that's a project we'll have done next week, so we'll be ready for the snow. And then Hell's Half Acre, uh, the boardwalk has been completed. Uh, final inspection was done last Monday. The outhouse has been ordered and they wanted to deliver in January, and I postponed that to April because I think January's a bad idea to try and dig a hole and set an outhouse. And then the picnic tables have been ordered, uh, for those picnic shelters.
Just, just to go back to the outhouse specs on that, that one actually has a vault, that's actually a vaulted outhouse and not like the one that we have at the biathlon where you have a a baffling, or not a baffle, but a, a, uh.
The liner?
The liner in there.
Yes, correct.
So that'll be easier to clean out and everything else.
Visit Casper is the one that has the grant money for this, everything at Hell's Half Acre. But I've coordinated with them, and so I, I provided specifications on this outhouse. Which side the, the door opens on, direction of the vents, orientation of it. Making sure we have a, a painted-on sealed liner versus the rubber liner that sucks up with the suck truck. So yeah, so that's, that's all progressing. Um, park staff will be out there. Hopefully within the next month, we have some contouring, ground contouring to do around the boardwalk. And just dress it up some more. And then, uh, we're working on replacing the fencing down to four feet. But we need to get materials ordered and get staff out there, so. Alcoa Reservoir, uh, the Trailer Park sidewalk repair has been completed. I'm still waiting to receive the invoice for that.
Have you reached out to?
I have not reached out, but I have not heard from him.
Okay. If you have trouble getting hold of him, let me know.
Right.
I'll try it also.
Uh, on October fifteenth, staff will be shutting off the water. And we did provide notices a while back for, um, our new disconnection policy. Making sure everybody's disconnected, um, from, from our system. Uh, that's, that's the permittees responsibility. That's not such an issue, except when we fire it up in the spring. The, uh, lot permit revisions for the next five years. Um, I began redlining those, uh, just the initial things that I see, that some of it's real generic, it's dates and, and, and things of that sort, um, formatting. And I'll be bringing those in front of the board at the November meeting, so we can kind of walk through those red lines and then, allow the board to, to take them and we'll follow up at another meeting and, and compile all the, all the changes before we present it to the Bureau Rec to see what they have to say about it. And then after the Bureau Rec reviews it, initially reviews it, I'd like to have, uh, meetings with either the, uh, cabin board or general meeting with permittees, whoever may come to, to discuss these changes and, and see if there's anything that the permittee might like to see. I'm making any promises that we can include it, but I'd like to at least have that public discussion. And then in the papers I provided you, the last paper, uh, the Cabin Water and Sewer Study, uh, we interviewed, uh, well, we did an RFP and I met with several uh, candidates out there, and we had, um, four that provided written proposals. Uh, I had a group of five that, um, reviewed those and scored them. Uh, myself, Chairman North was included. Two retired civil engineers that have done a lot of, uh, phase one, phase two, septic studies and designs and, and whatnot, geology. And once they were all scored, um, one of them really came out on top, so, um, I was kind of decided that we would just interview and discuss with one the contract, and then open their price proposal and see if they came within budget. And that notice award I, I've provided you is for WWC Engineering. They're the ones that scored the highest, uh, through the composite score and raw scores from all five individuals. And so, um, I do currently have their proposed contracts in with County Legal reviewing them. Um, so if this board desires, um, like to have that contract awarded to them so they can get started and start on the process of understanding what's going on out of cabins with the water and sewers, or water and septic, sorry, not sewer.
Right now, I'd, I'd, with that being said, I'd entertain a motion for it, providing that legal counsel doesn't have any.
I'd like to see the contract first.
Sure, okay.
Can you send that to me, Mike?
What's that?
The contract.
Okay. You want to see it now, or?
I can't read it right now.
Okay. I'll, I'll send, I'll send the contract out to the, to the board.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't realize that had been sent to everybody. Sorry, Michael, didn't mean to interrupt the.
Oh, that's okay. Um, so that, that's really all I have. The, the last thing I, I didn't put on here, uh, under the director's report, I guess it would be under new business. I didn't have any old business, so I guess at this time, I'll leave it up to you, Chairman.
Have you heard anything back from the groups that wanted for the softball?
I have not.
Okay.
I haven't had any communication with them in the last month.
I haven't heard anything at all, so. Do you guys want to give feedback on the sidewalks?
Yeah, as far as, uh, I think it was a, a needed thing for quite a, quite a long time, and I've heard from, from other residents out there that sidewalks are a nice thing. It was, it'd been a hazard for a lot of people that have tripped over them and, and have fallen. And just different things about it, so I think it was very appreciative of this board that, uh, we got that done this year. For being a resident out there for quite a few years, it was nice to see that the, uh, that the board and County Parks did do something out there, including getting the trees out. It's going to help be a problem in the future with those, so I think, uh, I think Jose did a really good job on them. So, yeah, thank you from a resident and everything else to the board.
I echo, um, John Hatcher's comments, and the sidewalks look great, and I had a whole lot, like, really cracked in a hole, and it's all a lot better now, and I've heard from other residents out there that, um, they think the sidewalks look great, and I think that this was really goodwill towards everyone out there.
Great, so.
Hey, Michael. Hey, Michael, just to let you know, when I was out there walking through with Jose, the, um, the dumpsters that are back on the back part that, um, the, the concrete was really, really bad and cracked, which is because of the dump truck, or the garbage trucks rolling in there every week. And Jose was saying, when he saw that design, it wasn't designed, the concrete wasn't stable enough, so he was making sure that that area was going to have a lot more rebar in it. And future cracks or anything else in there from the, the dump trucks just being heavy as they are, rolling in and out there once a week, so. In that design he did, he beefed that up a little more for us.
I can't think of any other old business that we have. Anything from the reservoirs as far as marinas, uh, your location or campgrounds, or any concerns that we have, Michael?
No, we're just, uh, currently working on maintenance. Um, I did do the, uh, annual compliance review with Bureau Rec on both the concession agreements, Pathfinder Marina and the Alcoa Marina. Um, I'm reviewing those reports right now before I submit those to the concessionaires. Really, they're very minor findings. There wasn't anything significant like we'd seen in the past, so they went pretty smoothly on that. I guess the only other old business that I might have is, we currently have on the schedule a, uh, additional Parks Board and Trustees meeting for October twenty-second. I wanted to know if the Board of Trustees wanted to keep that, um.
We may need to keep that one to, um, approve the contract, since we're not going to do it tonight. Let's keep that one. That may be the only thing we have on the agenda, but let's do that so that we do have that on the schedule. And then, like I said, that may be the only thing that we have. It may be a very, very short meeting.
Okay. And then the only other thing is, um, I overlooked the change in time that was approved and we had the, amount of time we had to have that open. So I'd just like to state to everybody on the record here that all meetings from here on out are at five o'clock, whether they're the, um, regular scheduled meeting here or, uh, the special, I guess there are special meetings out at the Parks Office. So I do apologize for that, um, little bit oversight, um, today. And that's all I have.
Any other? You got the Alcoa Trailer Park for new business?
Um, yeah, Chairman, you mentioned that, um, some of the members of the Trailer Park may have some concerns, and so I wanted to give them appropriate time above and beyond public comment, and so that's why I put that on the new business.
Okay. I know several of you are from the Trailer Park. I didn't know if you wanted to address anything tonight or not. Yeah, come on up and you'll have to turn that one on. Just push the button and it'll turn to green. And then state your name and address.
Mike Dean, Trailer one fifty-five. One concern I have is, uh, the power next to the full hookup, um, to our trailer. It, the power's been out for quite a while. I was just wondering if there's, if that's on the agenda to be fixed.
So I've had, uh, an electrician out there looking at it a couple of times. From what my understanding is, there is a problem with the neutral that is High Plains Power, uh, that feeds that meter. So High Plains Power feeds the power to the meter, and then we have power after the meter. Um, so I've contacted High Plains Power three times now, and I've heard nothing about them doing any of that, uh, repair. So I'll continue through, continue trying to get them out there to do that, because that, that falls on, on their system, not, not anything that the county is responsible for, but it does need to be repaired, because I believe it affects some other trailers besides the full hookup.
Okay. Yeah, I, I saw High Plains out there at one point, then they left and.
Yeah, so I will follow up with them again.
The Modern Electric came after, after that.
Yeah, that's who I contact, contracted out to, to look at it and see what they could find, so.
I was just curious, because, you know, we, we get new neighbors every weekend, and, um, a couple of them ran into that situation where they, we had to string cords to our trailers.
Yeah, and we've tried to, right now that site is blocked off, so we don't have any future reservations, so we have it corrected. Uh, but I know there's friends of folks in the Trailer Park that, that like to stay there because they're close, close to who they're hanging out with. So, uh, we're working on getting that fixed.
Okay, um, also had, um, sorry, I, this was a last minute thing for me. That's why I was late, um. Also had, um, a concern with the rates that seem to, seem to be going up, you know, year after year after year.
Um, so yes, the rental rates, um, there was appraisal done in two thousand twelve that set a baseline, um, and they've gone up just like everything else, gas, rent, insurance, everything's gone up. And so the rental rates have gone up, um, in two thousand twenty-one, when we redid the permits for the five-year stint. Um, we could have followed the, um, ten-year weighted average of the Consumer Price Index. Um, but I chose to follow, uh, State Park's cabin lease rates, which is a, a mixture of that weighted average, Wyoming Cost of Living Index, and it comes out with a fixed escalator rate. So for the last five years, it's increased one point five percent. Which when you look over the Consumer Price Index for the last five years, it's a whole lot better. Uh, I've started on those calculations for this next permit cycle. Um, I have not verified him, I've gone through him twice. I like to go through them several times, make sure all the math's working right. Um, it will be higher than that, the fixed escalator rate, so that increase goes up. But those, the rental rate out there is, um, it's on par with. Let me see if I have the answer right here. Um, with the, the RV site in Mills, the new RV campground across from Sloans, uh, based on a monthly rate and, um, I don't have it right in front of me. So, um, I've written up those comparisons or I've looked at comparisons. And for Trailer Parks or even RV parks, which this is a mobile home park, so it's different. Um, those, those rates are comparable.
Yeah, uh, it's from what I understand, the, um, the Trailer Court is two hundred sixty-five thousand an acre. While the ski club is valued at sixty-five thousand an acre. And that's waterfront property.
So the Trailer Park has a sanitary sewer system, has paved roads, uh, has sidewalk that's maintained by the county as well as the sewer and water is maintained by the county. The ski club and the boat club, they maintain their own access roads, they maintain their own water systems. Um, they maintain their own septic system for their, well, the boat club is on the, the county's sanitary system. But the ski club, or take, or clubhouse is on its own leach field and, and septic tank system. And, uh, the county doesn't do any maintenance within those areas. We don't do any tree maintenance, we don't do any road maintenance. Um, they, they pay for their own trash. Now, the trailer, Trailer Park owners do pay for the trash through the county. Um, you know, we, that's the user fee and the permit. So that, that's the difference in, in, I wasn't here in two thousand twelve when they did their appraisal. Uh, I've looked at it, but not in detail, so I'm not sure why there's a different comparison. Um, the ski club, their RVs, a lot of them can't exceed thirty feet in length. And they, they can't have slides because of confined space. So, uh, comparing a, you know, a fourteen foot by fifty foot trailer to a twenty-six foot camper is different. But there is the waterfront aspect and I, I'm not familiar with that part of the analysis. So, we can discuss it further, um, if you'd like to come into my office and we can look in detail as to why they came up with that.
Okay, um, and I haven't been out there, um, in the last week, but, but I agree the sidewalks are great. Um, one concern I do have with that is where it's, is it going to be tied back into the pavement? Because there's, you know, where their forms were set, it was washing out with that heavy rain.
Yeah, so park staff will, um, work with some asphalt patch. Um, it may not be, it, we'll try and get it this fall, but sometimes that asphalt patch doesn't like cooler temperatures. So, um, we'll, we'll try and get on that, but that's on our schedule to get, get that asphalt patch to where it was removed.
Okay, yeah, I just noticed that because there's a, there's a section right across from our trailer. It was getting washed out pretty good.
Yeah, so we'll be working on that, um, hopefully within the next month, we have warm enough days for it.
Alright, I'm. So ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, this is Condo Edwards, thirty-eight seventy Squaw Creek Road. Um, with the Trailer Park, um, before you, uh, send the proposal to the Bureau, why don't you do a public meeting to see what revisions you can get before you send it to them? Because if you send it to them and then turn around and have for the public, they're going to give you more comments on things they want to get changed. Well, then you're going to have to go back to them again, why do it twice, go back, just do it the one time?
No, that's a valid point and, and we can structure it that, that way. Um, I just felt like if the Bureau Rec had some new, um, mandatory verbiage, I'd like to get that presented in front of the permittees, um, upfront, you know.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I just thought it'd be helpful to get everybody involved in it before you send it to them and then had to turn around and resend it to them.
Yeah, this, uh, this will be a multiple iteration between the county and the Bureau Rec. Uh, hopefully it's fewer iterations than it was in twenty-one. Um, but yeah, I, I'll work on getting that in front of the public before, uh, we go to the Bureau Rec.
Yeah, that way we can see if we can help out, maybe we have some verbiage that we'd like to add into it before you send it to them. Um, other thing I got, by the way, concrete does look good on all the sidewalks. Want to make sure you guys know that, that's greatly appreciated. Um, the rates, I agree with Mike on these. From, is there any way to do another study to have them do it now where it's about ten years, twelve years later? Because.
Are you talking about an appraisal?
An appraisal done, yeah, to find out exactly what we're worth because if you look at the ski club, yeah, there's a lot of difference between them. But if you go back and look, even down in Havasu, people with the same stuff aren't paying near as much either. Or if you go to Laughlin, they're not paying near as much as we are. So my question is, is can we go to and get another appraisal done? Just try to get it more accurate because we can't compare it to what it's in Alcova. Because they're a trailer, they're a trailer, like you said, trailer, can't compare those two together. Um, also, we're paying twenty times more than what ski club is. And their waterfront property. They still have electricity. Even though they have to haul their sewer, they're still dumping it into the sewer. So it's still being maintained by you, just not transferred to you that way. They're just doing the transferring part. So I don't, I don't think there's a lot of difference between them. By the time you even it out, we should be paying pretty close to the same amount.
Or, or possibly the ski club should be paying what you guys are paying.
Well, that's possible too, but that ain't going to make ski club very happy.
So, the question or the answer on the appraisal, that would be up to this board if they wanted to contract someone to do another appraisal, which is fairly costly. I believe the one in two thousand twelve was fairly expensive. And I, I would warn that there's likelihood an appraisal is not going to reduce the rate, but probably elevate the value of everything. And so then the rent would go up accordingly.
Well, if, if it does, it does, but it should also raise ski clubs too, because right now, like I said, we're paying twenty times more than what ski club is paying.
So here's the difference, the trailers are individual lot permits. And so each person has their own lot that they're responsible for in the Trailer Park.
Will they make a proposal to put it all as one?
If, if that was to be done in the Trailer Park as one would be responsible for the asphalt, the sidewalk, the sewer, the water lines, all of that, the county would not maintain that, like we don't maintain it inside the ski club or the boat club. So if the county's responsibility would end at the meter.
Okay, so then that would be, we'd be our own entity then too, correct?
You, you would fall under a lot permit like the boat club and the ski club, a single lot permit. And then you would have to charge the rent to each trailer lot and collect that money from each trailer lot and manage that money and approve a budget to, to pay for the, the water and the sewer and the repairs inside and all of that. I, I think it's highly unlikely.
And then right along with that, the Bureau of Rec would also have to approve of that as well. So it's not just this board, it'd actually have to be the Bureau of Rec that would actually have to approve of that.
And the Bureau of Rec will not approve any new private exclusive use. So, which is what it would be, they would vacate all the current private exclusive use lots. And so they would not create a new one because they, they'd like to see these go away.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to think outside the box here a little bit.
Right.
I mean, if we was to do something like that, would you, if, if everything got approved to do something like that, would you still take care of the bathhouse or would that be on us from that point on?
Um, that would be, that would be inside your area, so it would be similar to the outhouses or the clubhouse that the ski club has.
Okay.
So that would be your responsibility. And if it fell on the county, it would probably be demoed because we have a public bathhouse nearby at the full hookups.
That's all I needed to know there. Um, next question is, where are we at with the new sewer system and the new water lines coming? Because I know, I hate to say it, but I'm on top of the hill and my neighbor's right next to beside me. And he's got the manhole cover and it backed up into the manhole cover and filled my house full of smell and his house.
Yeah, I remember that, I was out there that night working on it. Um, so we have full construction drawings on file, uh, we have bid documents on file. However, the engineer's estimate is four million dollars to replace that system, the water and sewer. Um, the county does not have four million dollars and the Bureau Rec restricts how we spend our funds. So we can't just spend all of the county's lake funds on a private exclusive use area. Unless the sidewalks are considered public, the bathhouses considered public, that's how we could expend funds on those projects. But the, the water and sewer are not for the public within the Trailer Park. And so until we find four million dollars, um, or more, by the time we get there, um, that's, that's how we'll have to do it. Now, um, we did apply for a congressional grant and we were denied that grant. So we are looking at funding avenues, but we haven't come up with one yet.
Yeah, just thinking outside the box there. If I get contaminated because of the sewer backing up, wouldn't that be considered a safe, safety issue? Makes me sick because of smells coming in my house? Or the water, the, because of the water, the sewer lines are so old, they're collapsing, they're, they're clay tile. We know there's clay tile, they're going to collapse. They only got so much of a span, lifespan on them, so wouldn't that be considered a safety issue from that point on? Because now you're contaminating the ground.
So when we find those, we replace them with replaceable pipe. Um, you know, there's multiple sections that have been replaced over time throughout there. Uh, the water system is tested monthly, uh, that's a D Q public water system. I have two certified operators out there that have licenses to do the sampling to operate a water system. Um, I'm about to be certified here pretty soon as well. So, um, the county takes that very seriously. Um, I don't know about sewer smells or not, um. Right now, the only way to prevent that, if that's a health concern, would be to shut down the system. Uh, the county has no other way to operationally prevent that. So if, if that is an issue, then, um, that's what would have to happen.
My next, well, along with the water lines there then, uh, aren't they an outdated, outdated pipe, piping that's in the ground?
Um.
That poly black pipe?
Yes, but it's, um, part of the D Q, it's, uh, grandfathered in, I mean, so.
I just wondered because I had to jerk all mine out when I redid my well.
Right.
County, county made me take all mine out and put all new piping in, that's why I'm asking. When I decided to revamp my well and put my new house in. I even had to pull the old stuff out.
That, that's because you redid it. When you get to that point, when you, when you start doing that, it's just like electrical. If you go in and you start doing electrical, you, everything has, everything related to that has to be brought up to code. And so it's the same, it's the same way when you come to water lines and stuff like that. Is that when you start pulling that out, at that point, it has to be brought up to code, at least that portion of it that you're dealing with.
And I agree with that, or my, or when it ran to my house and I, because when I, when I built my house, I agree with that. But the, the rental house that was next to me has been there since sixties. The house that's below me been there since seventies. I had to pull a new pipe for both, all three houses.
They were all tied into the same location, aren't they?
Well, they're all tied to the well, yes.
That's the reason why.
But the well didn't change, the only thing I did was take, I had to take, unscrew that pipe, put a new pipe fitting on there and run that new, new pipe to my house.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm asking, because I had to do a change, I had to do all three houses and it got really costly on my end. So that's why I was asking if there was certain degree to where if you have a leak and you have to change that pipe, do you have to change all of it? Because if you change a, uh, leak, just like you said, you're going in and putting in sections into the sewer, what if you have to do the same thing to the water line?
So I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on what the, um, code is on that, so I'd have to look into it further. I know the, the repairs that my staff does to the water system are basically emergency repairs.
Um, yeah, and I've helped them with it, I've, I've been out there and helped them do it, so. And gave them extra fittings that they didn't have and anything they needed, I'd said, just come tell me, I'll get it for you. Help them out as much as possible, try to keep everything going.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, that's all I had and the concrete does look really good. I appreciate you guys getting that done also, I, it does look good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Austin.
I think that's, yeah, it's public comment, huh?
Austin Burgess, six, six fifteen South Beach, uh, Director of Central Army Trails Alliance. Uh, just giving you a quick update, um, on a lot of things that we've had going since our last meeting even. Um, we were able to complete the, what, the Eagle Scout wasn't able to make it tonight, but, uh, we did complete that Eagle Scout Bridge project. Um, he, his project has not been approved by, uh, his, uh, the scout master and the processes that he does. When that's done, I'll update you on that and there will be a plaque put on that and we'll, uh, make that a, uh, you know, a public, uh, you know, public notice on that, basically on that particular project. The trail that, uh, was approved, uh, that connects to that, um, is about halfway completed. Uh, as far as the roughing goes, we ran into some really wet weather and a broken machine, so we are paused right now. Um, I've got to, uh, get the, uh, We ran into some really wet weather and a broken machine, so we are paused right now, um I've got to uh get the mini X repaired. And we'll get back on that, hopefully before the snow flies, at least get it roughed in, so it's not a bridge to nowhere. Um, other than that, um I did want to confirm with uh Michael Brown that Fat Fish did confirm with me tonight. That they will be there for sure, so there you go, um this has been a a pretty awesome event to be a part of this grand opening, so. Um, you know, I've been working a lot with Michael on, you know, logistics and stuff like that. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna be unveiling, which was a big request of ours was mapping, and that's what I kind of want to update you and share with you guys tonight. That we finally have paper maps done and our digital interactive interactive maps done as well, so I've got two. Um, so we're getting a a hundred and fifty maps uh made and we'll be handing them out, they're gonna be free maps. Uh handed out at the grand opening, uh these are all the existing and new trails that are completed. That we will be doing the ribbon cutting ceremony for, so um I don't have all the mileages added up right now, I have it generically on my phone, but we're somewhere around. I think we're around like six miles of brand new trail up there right now, um it's a huge uh huge infrastructure um. Uh benefit to the county that we've been able to do, I'll get those costs together, um uh. For the uh county commissioners when I do a meeting later for that one, I'm in doing an update for the county commissioners. On the in-kind that we've been able to do in the last two years, it's pretty, the numbers, the rough numbers we're looking at are pretty staggering, it's pretty awesome what we're able to do. Um, like I say, we're gonna be getting those maps out, uh we have some large printed maps that are gonna be coming up to the event. And then some smaller maps that are gonna be placed on the trail, um and continuing continuing on the map and sign topic. Uh, being that it's not winter yet, last year we were going, uh this this board does not really know what was happening uh with the uh. Winter use signs that were up there, but we do have an approved plan for a sign that I've been working with uh Michael Brown on. And we're going to go ahead and get those signs made, I'll introduce those to you again as for you guys, so you can see what's going on with that sign. Um, it's basically a uh a one-stop shop, these are the county rules for the winter use trails. Um, and our organization is gonna be getting those uh to the county and assisting on getting those mounted on the. Uh skid structures that block off the trails for the trail rules, so we have basically a really consistent message up there on everything. Um, other than that, uh I think that's it that I have for trail update, we're approaching snow pretty soon, so we're gonna be pulling off. Uh, we're keeping equipment pretty close to the roads, um so we don't get snowed in anywhere, um we are still continuing our trail construction, trail fills and a whole bunch of. Really awesome stuff, so um we're gonna continue that until we get snowed out and then off to Alcova for the Cottonwood Creek Dinosaur Trail. Questions?
Austin, I have one question, the maps that you're displaying here, those are the single track trails only, correct?
That is correct, those are the single track trails, um so the way that you can navigate that particular map is. Um, there is a uh yellow star next to, well, everything's in the legend as well. Um, there's a yellow star next to all the new trails that have been constructed in the last two years, um. There is a, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a little mountain bike icon for the mountain bike optimized trails, which are, which were part of that Kalen Master Plan as far as. Um, those particular trails, so mountain bike optimized trails are trails that have mountain bike features. It's not like they're a mountain bike only trail, but they have, they're more fun for mountain bikers, we're trying to direct the mountain bike traffic over to those new trails and off Eatsville and Copper and stuff like that. Where the hikers are really uh wanting to utilize those, and we've been pretty successful, the numbers are pretty. Awesome on what I see daily over there, be even before we had any maps up, um. The uh, we also, there's a snowflake next to all of our winter access trails, actually, thank you for mentioning that uh too, Michael. Because that I wanted to bring that up as well, um we are going to attempt to groom, I think it's uh, I think it's eleven to twelve miles of groom trail, I'm gonna be getting a grooming. A grooming plan to Michael Brown um here in the next few weeks, as far as what we are going to be doing as an organization on the single track trail grooming. Um, I've already talked to the uh uh grooming staff up there this year, and we're gonna be working on a plan, so. When I groom, they're not grooming and I'll try to groom before them so they can fix all the cross traffic that I'm doing across the ski trails to make it. A really cohesive experience up there. Any other questions?
I have a question, I just want to thank you, you guys have done a lot up there, you've done a whole lot up there and I really do appreciate it, whether it's. Working on that bridge program, you know, going across stuff, the trails, increasing everything and and. You guys have done an excellent job, and I really do appreciate that, opening up a lot of the stuff that had been on that list for a long time. And making it possible, especially when we didn't have the staff to do it, so I really do appreciate that uh more than I can say.
Cool, well, thank you, thank you for your guys' support too, um we wouldn't be able to do this without the support of and the partnerships with the county, the county commissioners. And be prior to you guys, the Parks Advisory Board, but now the Board of Trustees, and I want to personally thank you for helping out today on the. Facebook stuff, so thank you um for that, that it sounds like that's a dead topic now, but.
I hope so, it should have been right after the first comment, but yeah, I agree.
But I appreciate that, so um, yeah, anything else? Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Austin, alright, any other comments? Alright, we will move on to trustee comments.
Nothing real earth shattering or anything, just a comment from Michael. Do you think that we might see something on the ORD? Some point, because I know you don't have anything else to do. But uh if you and if you and Mike can kind of work that together and and present us with something, eventually that'd be really great.
Yeah, I've had brief discussions with him, but uh we kind of cross paths r rarely anymore, so. Um, but yeah, I think ultimately it would be Roden Bridge's decision, but um I have. I have a layout for Casper Mountain and in that area for the OR ORV, um so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah, I do think that would be good, not just Casper Mountain, but out of the lake and some of that stuff as well, so if you can. Get some of that stuff, so.
That.
Lake, I don't know about.
I have a few concerns about that, but um we could look at some places.
So, um, yeah, I'm not necessarily talking about Alcova, but like with Pathfinder with like Bishop's Point. Um, some of those areas that are actually outside of the Bureau of Rec's control, some of that stuff, that's that's kind of what. We're going down toward the port is, and that, that's kind of, that's what I meant with that, so.
You want that tomorrow or by the end of the year? Thanks.
Alright. Stacy?
Nothing today.
Alright, well, I do appreciate everything, we've we've actually got. A lot of things that have been accomplished, uh you know, from the sidewalks to Hell's Half Acre to moving forward. Forward on a lot of different projects and uh looking forward to having the grand opening. Um, and I do appreciate the, everything that's gone into that. Hopefully the weather will hold out long enough for us to get that apron put in and that drain. Put in, because I know that'll help out a lot as far as keeping the water off or getting the water off where it needs to go, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so.